Good evening. I'd like to first start tonight by apologizing. We had some technical difficulties that caused us to start our meeting a few minutes late. So, thank you for being patient and staying online with us. So it is now 5:13, and I'd like to call to order the May 21st School Committee Special Meeting. As you are all aware, this meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Per the Governor's order, the public is not allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, however, members of the public can access the meeting via the livestream. At this time, we'll begin with a roll call. So to my right, Mr. Frichero?
Yeah.
Mr. Fonseca?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Antonella Rochella?
Here.
Kathy Slutty?
Here.
Pamela Blair?
Here.
Perfect. And we also have Attorney Gordon Quinn joining us this evening as well. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the committee?
I am not seeing anyone.
If you would like to, you just have to raise your hand so Mr. Quimby can let you in.
No.
All set? Okay. So this School Committee Special Meeting is being convened to consider the requests of Randy and Meredith Sample, who have moved to Hamden, Massachusetts, that their children be allowed to enroll or continue to be enrolled in East Long Meadow Public Schools. Two of their children are already enrolled, and one would start to be initially enrolled next fall. I'm presiding this evening because the School Committee Chair, Greg Thompson, is related to Meredith Sample, and due to this relationship, he has recused himself from participating in this matter in accordance with state conflict of interest rules. The School Committee has the responsibility, under the laws of this state and under our policies, to decide requests such as these from parents who no longer reside or principally reside in the town of East Long Meadow. I need to add that during the course of this meeting, there is the potential that the School Committee may need to vote to enter into executive session where the matters to be discussed directly pertain to confidential student records information or other confidential medical or health information relating to the family's children. If an executive session is convened, the School Committee will reconvene following the discussion in open session. At this time, I'd like to invite the Samples and/or their representative to address the committee.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Do you guys have an attorney with you?
We do.
Uh, the name?
Jane.
Jane?
Yep.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
There you go.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for joining.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll open the floor to either party, and you can feel free to address the committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Like, I'm Jane Montaleski. I am sorry I have a child with me. That's okay. I am the attorney for Meredith and Randy Sample. And like the committee chair was saying, we have, they have three children. They have Colby currently and Mallory, who have both attended the school system right now. Thank you, honey. I'm sorry. And they have a third child, Logan, who they hope to attend the East Long Meadow school system this fall as well. The Samples have been longtime residents of the town of East Long Meadow, and their children have always had, you know, their, um, their school careers in the East Long Meadow Public School System. In December of 2019, they purchased a home in Hamden. And their children still, Mallory and Colby, their oldest two children, still continue to attend the East Long Meadow Public School System. The Samples do, although they principally reside in the town of Hamden now, they have real estate located at 11 Converse Circle in East Long Meadow. And they are, one of their parents, I believe it's Meredith Sample's parents, currently reside at that home. They were informed that in order for their children to continue to reside at the East Long Meadow Public School System, they needed to do what I believe is called a caregiver affidavit. So just as a way of a little bit of a background, their daughter Mallory, who's in third grade, and she attends Mountain View. She has some special needs. She has a trach in her throat to help her breathe and for other various, other various things. She has a special nurse that works with her at her school, as well as a couple of special teachers. She requires nighttime care that is provided by her parents with respect to the trach, and you know, to the extent that the School Committee needs, you know, additional information on that, I'm sure the Samples will be happy to provide that. But she has some very, a very dedicated team at Mountain View who have been great for her with respect to her special needs. So there was a caregiver affidavit that was needed to be done by the Samples so that Mallory and her brother Colby could continue to attend the East Long Meadow Public Schools and live at the 11 Converse Circle home with the, with their grandparents. This is difficult, as you can, as one can imagine, with having a child that does require such special care, especially at night. And it has, is definitely put a strain on that care and the ability for her parents to be there for her and having to rely upon grandparents. So obviously, before the whole, you know, pandemic happened, they were doing what they could, and the children were staying Sunday through Thursday night, the two oldest, Colby and Mallory, at the 11 Converse Circle home. So based upon everything, the, the continued payment of taxes in the, in the, in the town of East Long Meadow, they had really hoped and thought that, you know, this could work for them. Their children, both Colby and Mallory, love, you know, their teachers and the East Long Meadow schools that they're at. Colby attends Burchland Park. They have a great, great group of, you know, teachers, friends, and especially again, Mallory, who has, you know, these special needs and just has a great team there. And the, the Samples, you know, they moved to Hamden. They have the ability to attend the Wolverhampton-Hamden School District, but they want to continue to attend East Long Meadow because they have such a great team of teachers and the support team that they have there. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, they wanted this property at Converse Street or Converse Circle so that they could continue to hopefully, you know, pay the taxes and have their children attend the schools. If, you know, there's any questions specifically from the School Committee, I'm happy to answer those, or the Samples are happy to answer those. I did look, you know, up in your, in your manual, and I did look at the statutes referenced in your manual, and it does appear that the School Committee can do some, I think it's special action is the word that they use. With respect to the Samples, I think this is a, you know, unique situation that the children do still have, or the, the family does still have a property in the town, and they do still pay, pay the taxes to the town. And the unique situation of Mallory and her great team that she has in place in the East Long Meadow Public School Systems, so, system. So if there's anything that the School Committee needs for, by the way, information, I'm happy to provide it. The Samples are happy to provide it. Any questions, anything, we're, we're here for you and ready to answer them.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, Meredith and Randy, are there, is there anything you wanted to add before we, we continue the conversation? Anything at this time?
Yes, please. As Jane mentioned, I mean, those are a lot of the facts. And I mean, it's comforting to be on the Zoom video, even though we're so far apart. We have so many familiar faces. You know, we've had, Mr. Frichero was a principal of ours. You know, we were in school with the Rochella family. Kathy Slutty is a great friend. It's just comfortable, and it kind of brings us back to where we are. And this is a situation that we never expected to be in. We bought the property on Converse Circle. We didn't expect to leave East Long Meadow, but as the process of looking for something for our family, we didn't truly find exactly what we were, were really trying to accomplish. And so we purchased that property to have Meredith's parents live there, you know, keep our kids in the system. You know, we, we are truly Spartans. We, we love the system. We love the district. We want our kids to continue to be able to experience what we experienced from grade school through the high school. You know, as Gordon has handled this very professionally and with a lot of compassion. And when this anonymous letter came out, and it basically come to the realization that what we thought was accurate and that we could keep them in the system by using an address that we own and are responsible for, and we have a lot of interaction with. I mean, that's a property that is in our family. The kids get dropped off at school there from the bus. They spend nights there. They were doing all of these things, and it's not a ghost property. It's not a ghost address. And so we felt like we had it in a, understood in a way that we are going to be successful. And this anonymous letter came out, and of course, shed some light on the situation a little bit more, and Gordon informed us that it wasn't truly how it was set up to be. And we're, now we're here in Hamden, and our kids, we still want them there. You know, I'm not looking for a favor. I'm not looking for anything to be done that shouldn't be done. We're just trying to approach this. We felt like researching this with Jane, that there was an opportunity that we could come to a determination that would still allow our children to stay in the district, experience what we want them to always experience, and graduate, and go through the East Long Meadow system. And we're grateful and thankful that we're here, and you're giving us that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you for that, and thank you for the, um, the wonderful remarks about the, the district as a whole and the community as a whole. Thank you. Anything further from, from either? Okay. At this time, Mr. Smith, I was wondering, could you shed some light on past precedents on any situations like this within, within East Long Meadow Public Schools? To help provide some context for us as committee members?
Sure. One, hello, Mr. and Mrs. Sample and Attorney Montaleski. How are you?
Wow, thank you.
Good. And I certainly would echo the statements that Mr. Sample made. The Samples have always been very forthright and forthcoming. We discussed residency and really what it entails. And a lot of people, I think as Mr. Sample was alluding to, feel that it's around paying taxes. But actually, the residency law talks about where the child sleeps. So if a child is residing in the town and sleeping in that town, that's where the child's entitled to go to the public schools. And so that's just a little bit about residency in general. In terms of an overview of what the, the district does, certainly we understand and uphold School Committee policy around residency, which basically follows the law, looking at children who reside in East Long Meadow have the opportunity to go to the East Long Meadow Public Schools. And that, upholding that policy really begins first and foremost with enrollment. When families come in to register and enroll, we ask that they provide us with three examples showing that they live in town. And those can be, these are just a couple of examples. A quick claim deed, a mortgage statement, a rental lease agreement, homeowner's policy, insurance policy, a pay stub. There are others, but those are just some of the more common ones. And as they go through the registration process, if we have that information, they're residing in town, we finish off the registration process, and we enroll the students in the appropriate schools. Every year throughout, at least my tenure, we probably have somewhere between 10 to 15 residency investigations when some type of information or question comes to the attention usually of one of the school administrators, or it could be a teacher. Then that gets reported to the central office. And we, as many districts do, employ a residency investigator, who happens to be a retired police detective from the Springfield Police. Last two years, just to give you an idea, 2018, 2019, we completed a total of 12 residency investigations. And the results vary in terms of what we find out. Out of the 12 from the 2018-2019 school year, eight showed that the students were residents. Two showed that the students were not residents, and those two students were withdrawn. One determined that the student was, or could be deemed homeless under the McKinney-Vento Act, and therefore had the protection of the McKinney-Vento Act. And then one was a situation where they were transitioning between a caregiver who lived in East Long Meadow to another caregiver who lived in East Long Meadow. This school year through March 13th, which was the date that we closed due to COVID-19, we had completed 10 residency investigations, and it followed somewhat of a similar pattern and process, if you will. Of the 10 that we completed, three were shown to be East Long Meadow residents. Five were shown to be not residents, and those students withdrew. Two were deemed homeless and had protection under the McKinney-Vento Act. So that's somewhat the, the history in terms of any given school year. Other areas of policy and residency in 2012, and I think this was something that Attorney Montaleski mentioned in the letter, Policy JFAB, it's a policy that outlines the potential for paying tuition to the district when a student is a non-resident. I think specifically, if I'm understanding the law correctly, that's now really only something that can be put in place should a student move from East Long Meadow and really move out of the state of Massachusetts. So I don't think we can charge tuition to a resident of Massachusetts. Anyway, in this case, it was a situation where a family moved from East Long Meadow to a Connecticut town. It's just, as I said, in 2012, they had three students, one of whom was at the high school, and two of whom were at other schools in town. We worked similarly to how we worked with the Samples. We worked to try to figure out something that was going to be in the best interest of upholding the policy while also being fair to the family. The two younger students transferred to the schools within the Connecticut town. The challenge for the high school student was, at the time, East Long Meadow High School is pretty much a straight block scheduling high school, which means that most of their courses were semester courses. And the high school to which the student was going to transfer was a traditional high school schedule with roughly seven periods and year-long courses. With that, we worked out a situation where that family did pay tuition. It was prorated, of course, because this was happening somewhat after the midpoint of the year. And the child finished paying tuition and finished at East Long Meadow High School for that year, and then transitioned to the high school in the Connecticut town for the next school year. Getting to the, more specifically to the situation that we talked about with the Samples, over the last few years, the caregiver affidavits, or an arrangement where families work out a caregiver arrangement with a, usually a relative, similar to what the Samples described, who does live in East Long Meadow, they will fill out a caregiver affidavit, and they will have that notarized. And then we meet, and we go through it. Not only do I meet with the parents who are putting forth the caregiver affidavit, but I also meet with the caregiver, as I did in this case, and just explain the responsibility. And then Mr. Sample explained it, as did Attorney Montaleski, very well. Basically, the family is giving over certain parental authority to the caregiver, specifically in these cases, for the school to communicate with the caregiver, for the caregiver to make some educational decisions, and possibly some medical decisions should the school call with any kind of medical emergency. And for the most part, while school's in session, the family and the caregiver agree that the children will reside in the East Long Meadow home of the caregiver from Sunday through Thursday. And so this was a situation that has been increasing over the last few years. As I said, you know, something that when Mr. and Mrs. Sample and I started to look at the situation, we discussed and put in place, and as I said at the beginning, the Samples have been straightforward, candid, collaborative, and cooperative. And I think to Attorney Montaleski's point, it's challenging when you have these type of arrangements. It's, it's never an easy, smooth process because there are a lot of factors involved. But certainly appreciate everyone's collaboration and cooperation throughout this process.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you again for, for speaking to the collaboration between both the School District and the Sample family. We appreciate that as well. That gives us good insight into how this has been proceeding prior to today's meeting. And at this point, I'd like to open it up to any of the School Committee representatives if there's any questions for either Mr. Smith or the Sample family. Gordon, can, or Mr. Smith, can you just speak a little bit more? I think part of, part of the piece here that I just want to make sure that I'm really clear on is the distinction between taxes and residency. Just want to make sure that I'm understanding that really clearly, and I'm sure it would benefit all of us to kind of just hear that kind of laid out.
Sure. And if I misinterpret the law anywhere, we have two attorneys who are able to help me out. As far as I've always understood the, the residency requirement, and certainly our policy tries to follow the law, it's not really about taxes. Taxes, excuse me. It's, it's about where the child actually sleeps and resides. Therefore, you know, someone who is renting an apartment in a given municipality may not be paying property tax. Obviously, they're paying rent. Their, their children still would be able to go to that municipality's public schools. In this case, certainly the Samples are paying taxes. They actually own the house that we discussed earlier, and the grandparents are living there. The challenge here is that the children are actually residing in Hamden in the other home that they, they own, which certainly gives the children the right to go to the Hamden-Wolverhampton Public Schools, but it puts us in a little bit of a challenge in terms of attending East Long Meadow Public Schools.
And then I have one other question too. The caregiver affidavit, is that something that's renewed annually? Is that something that would, could be offered again in the future to the Sample family? Or is that kind of like a one-time document?
It's, it's actually something that, at least in accordance with the law, basically can be generated for two years. Generally, we do check up on it each year just to make sure it's in place. But the way I've, I've read the regulation around caregiver affidavits, I think they're good for two years, and then you have to refile and get them notarized again.
Okay. All right. Is there anything that either the representatives for the Samples or the Samples themselves want to add to the conversation?
Yes, if I may, I just want to touch on just two things, if, if that's okay. So the first, yes, Mr. Superintendent Smith, definitely right. It is where a child sleeps and not specifically a tax issue. So yes, I agree of that. But the statute is phrased in a way that the town can't essentially deny a resident the ability to attend the public school system because they are a resident. But it does allow the school system and the town to allow a non-resident child to attend by action of the School Committee. So it's not like there is a forbiddance or they're not allowed. It's just that the, the School Committee does need to afford that special consideration and take action upon that request, and that's why we're here today. And in addition, the, the taxes, I was really kind of hitting on that, that they, they do still put, you know, as owners of that Converse Circle property, they do still put, they're putting money into the town. And they still utilize services here in the town. And so it's not like they're full-on Hamden, you know, never come to East Long Meadow. They're here. They have a presence. They have property. They don't intend to, to know, you know, fully, fully leave the town because again, they, they grew up there. They like the town. So, and, and so that, that was on the taxes, and so I just wanted to make that little distinguish, distinguish that. And then just the final thing. They, the caregiver affidavit, yes, it, it worked for a little while because they had no other choice. The Samples had no other choice at that point in time. They, they knew that their, their team for Mallory was great. They didn't want to disrupt anything for their, for their children, and they're just really trying to do what's best for their children. And it's just, it's extremely difficult to put that medical responsibility for a special needs child on grandparents. And as a parent myself, I can only imagine, you know, having to put that on my parents and have to leave my child at night or not be able to be with them at any point in time. And so I think that this, this specific case, you know, warrants special consideration by the School Committee just because of that, you know, the, the medical difficulty on, on the grandparents and the caregiver, the, the extreme support that they have in the school system for their children, and their continued presence here in the town.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Samples or anything? No, no problem. Yeah, Rich, go ahead. Mr. Frichero? You're muted, Rich.
You're still muted, Rich.
This is extremely gut-wrenching. It really collides personal feelings with professional responsibility. And I feel, as one School Community member, I feel almost forced that we have to follow the policy on that quote word residency. I, I've done a lot of soul searching, looking for some type of way to make a decision that works for everyone. But I feel like that we have to respect that the students have to live in the town in order to attend our schools. And it's difficult for me to say that because of my personal feelings for Mr. and Mrs. Sample and their children. I want to go on record as saying that.
Thank you, Mr. Frichero. Are there any other questions for either Mr. Smith or either of the attorneys or the Sample family from any of the other members of the committee? No? Okay. Then at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the School Committee grant the Samples' request that their children continue to be enrolled in the ELPS after moving to Hamden to reside with their parents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I'd again like to just reiterate that I appreciate everyone's time this evening, the continued collaboration between the, the Sample family, the attorneys, Mr. Smith. And thank you, everyone, for what has been a very enlightening and positive conversation this evening. So thank you for that. With that, all those in favor, please say yes.
We have a roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call. That's right. It is the new rule in Zoom, or in virtual meetings. So Mr. Frichero?
No.
Mr. Fonseca?
No.
Ms. Rochella?
No.
And myself will, will be recorded as a no, Ms. Slutty. So that motion does not carry with a vote of zero to four. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
So roll call, Mr. Frichero?
Give me the second.
I'm sorry, second.
Second.
Okay, and then roll call, or any discussion? Mr. Frichero?
Yes.
Mr. Fonseca?
Yes.
Ms. Rochella?
Yes.
And myself is a yes as well, so that motion carries four to zero. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate everyone's time this evening.
Do I have one more second?